Mr. Mayor, I do have one change to the agenda this evening. Item number 15, the report regarding the acceptance of the age-friendly policy, we need to postpone to a future meeting as the presenter is not available.
Sounds good. Clerk would take note of that. Next item, please.
Levine Act disclosures. Does the council have any reporting? No reporting. Can move along to announcements from staff.
Good evening, Mayor Flores and Vice Mayor, council members and community. I am Marie Patea, work in City Hall, and I have four announcements this evening. The first one is Cofecito with Mayor Eddy and Councilmember Coleman is this Saturday, September 13th, at 10:00 a.m. at Royal Donuts, Royal Pin Donuts. Thanks to several community members who have already RSVP'd, but if you haven't, just please stop on by. This event is open for everyone and hope to see you there. Second is Fiesta Patreas.
Patreas.
Patreas. Patreas is also this Saturday, September 13th. It's a wonderful cultural celebration for Mexican Independence Day and is being held at Morales Hall, which is at 209 Miller Avenue. It starts at 5:00 p.m., goes till 9:00 p.m. It's a free, family-friendly event with ballet folklorico dancers, the coronation of the queen, amazing food, and so much more. So please stop by if you can. Third is Festa Italiana is this Sunday, September 14th, at Orange Memorial Park. It starts at 11:00 a.m., goes to 6:00 p.m. Also a free, family-friendly event. There will be a car show, Kid Zone, music, great food, bocce, and much more. Mayor Eddy and council members will be onstage about 12:15, so hope you can join us. And lastly, on behalf of Katie Donner, we have the Biotech &amp; Beyond Speaker Series, which we're inviting the community to learn about what's happening east of 101. The next event will be on Thursday, September 18th, at the Genentech Building 86, located at 751 Gateway Boulevard. A reception will take place from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., followed by the main program from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. This program will feature Genentech, the first biotechnology company in South San Francisco, founded here almost 50 years ago. Genentech is the reason our city is known as the birthplace of biotechnology, and it continues to lead the industry in pursuing groundbreaking science to discover and develop medicines for people with serious and life-threatening diseases. Our featured speaker will be Dr. Nicole Ritchie. She's Vice President and Global Head of Health Impact and Population Science at Genentech. Dr. Ritchie has over 15 years of experience in clinical and transitional research and is recognized and thought, and a thought leader in advancing health equity for numerous publications and frequent invitations to speak at major industry and policy events. Registration is required, and attendees must bring a valid ID for event check-in. For more information and to register, please visit the city's website. And thank you. And I have had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Ritchie, and so has Councilmember Nicholas and others, and she's amazing. So I hope people can join. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Marie. Hope to see the community around town at these events. Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor Flores and Vice Mayor Diego, members of the council. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our interim Finance Director. Drew Corbett is no stranger to San Mateo County. He was previously Assistant Finance Director for the City of Sunnyvale, Finance Director for the City of Milma Park, Finance Director for the City of San Mateo, Assistant City Manager for the City of San Mateo, and City Manager for the City of San Mateo. Just wanted to give Drew an opportunity to greet the council and our community.
Absolutely. Welcome, Mr. Corbett.
Thank you, Rich, and good evening, Mayor Flores, members of the city council. It is an absolute pleasure to be here. I appreciate the opportunity that Sharon and Rich have provided me to come in and serve in the role of interim Finance Director, and I very much look forward to serving the community here in South San Francisco. So thank you.
Welcome. Great to have you.
Thank you.
One more. Oh, one more. Okay. Sorry, one more. Good evening, Greg Mediatei, Director of Parks and Rec. Once again, I'm excited to invite the community to our annual Concert in the Park event, which will take place on Saturday, September 20th, from 11:30 to 5:00 p.m. at Orange Park. As I mentioned a couple weeks ago, I think this will be our largest concert yet with renowned performer Ozzy Motley, who for the past 30 years has been a cultural powerhouse and blended Latin, hip-hop, funk, reggae, and other global influences into a sound that really captures the diversity of our community. In addition to Ozzy Motley, we'll have Live Wire, a local band based out of San Francisco, food and drinks, a lot of great vendors and crafts, and activities for all ages. We hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mediatei. Great event happening there, building out of Cultura Fest, our Concert in the Park, our annual event. Everyone is welcome.
Mayor, I do have one more staff announcement, which is really a clarification. So at the city council meeting on August 27th, staff provided a presentation about a recent trip to our sister city, Kishiwata, Japan. The trip resulted from an invitation from the mayor of Kishiwata to the mayor of South San Francisco to come to Japan specifically to visit the Osaka-Kansai International Expo. The statement was made during the presentation that no city resources were expended on the trip, and I want to clarify that Kishiwata City offered to cover the lodging and the food for the delegation, which for five visitors from South San Francisco, each delegate covered their own plane fare out of their own pocket. There were three salaried employees who were in the delegation, and they were paid for the four workdays that they were involved with the exchange. At my direction, the employees did use, did not use vacation days, as I felt that they were busy on what I considered official business. However, there was no additional cost to the city beyond their salary. They would receive the same compensation, whether it was vacation or regular salary, but they were paid as their, for their regular work hours. So the city does have a written policy about sister-city exchanges, but the policy is silent on payment for employees if they are delegates. So this was a pretty unusual circumstance. We typically don't send employees to Kishiwata. So since this question came up after the presentation, I did ask some other cities in San Mateo County how they handle these situations, and I did receive one sample policy. So I would be happy to come back to council with the next update of the council handbook with a written policy to guide us in the future so that we handle such situations consistently. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next item, please.
We'll move along to presentations. Item number one is a proclamation celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Yesterday afternoon, yesterday morning, I should say, I was very privileged and honored to be selected by the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors and to be presented with the Hispanic-Latine Heritage Month proclamation county-wide. However, tonight, I have also the honor of presenting our city's proclamation recognizing Hispanic-Latine Heritage Month, celebrated from September 15th to October 15th, a time to uplift our cultures, our histories, and our enduring contributions to this country. This month is not just about celebration, it's about recognition, and we honor the independence of Mexico, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Costa Rica, and Chile, nations whose stories are rooted in resilience and a deep love for freedom. As everyone knows, I came to this country as an immigrant from El Salvador, carrying my family's dreams and our history. But let's also speak truth. Immigrants across this country are under attack, and when immigrants are under attack, justice itself is under attack. But we do not live in fear. No vivimos con miedo. We are not here to be tolerated. We are here to lead. We are not guests in this country. We are co-authors of its future. Just last month, we showed what that leadership looks like, as South City came alive with Cultura Fest, a celebration of Salvadorian heritage that brought together over 4,500 people with over 90 vendors. It became the largest outdoor cultural festival in our city's history. But it was really more than that. It was a reminder that our community, nuestra comunidad, we're not just surviving, we are thriving. We are shaping the future of this region and this nation. And I'd like to read a few excerpts of this proclamation into the record. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month began as a way to promote the history, culture, and contributions of Hispanic Americans, specifically those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas this year's theme is collective heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future, which was chosen by the National Council of Hispanic Employment Managers to guide observances and celebrations for the month and emphasizes the shared history, culture, and experiences that unite diverse Hispanic and Latine communities. And whereas 65 million Americans identify as Hispanic or of Hispanic origin, making Hispanics the largest ethnic minority, with the majority of the U.S. Hispanic population residing in California, Texas, and Florida. And whereas Hispanic Americans have been integral to the prosperity of the U.S. as legislators, artists, judges, farmworkers, musicians, activists, and their contributions to the nation are immeasurable, and they embody the best of American values. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of South San Francisco does hereby recognize September 15th to October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, a time to reflect on and celebrate the Hispanic-American community and how it has left an indelible mark on the U.S. culture and economy. Tonight, I'm very thrilled and honored to be joined by someone who also embodies that spirit of cultural leadership, Antonio Lopez, former mayor of East Palo Alto and the current San Mateo County Poet Laureate. Antonio de Jesus Lopez is a first-generation son of Mexican immigrants and a gifted writer whose work bridges the worlds of poetry, activism, and public service. In fact, his family came to East Palo Alto in July 1983, the same week of the city's historic incorporation as a city into the county. He is a graduate of Duke University, Rutgers University, University of Oxford, and is currently finishing his doctorate at Stanford. Former Mayor Lopez is also a college professor and uses his voice to uplift the stories of our communities. As the fifth county poet laureate, he brings poetry into public spaces, reminding us that art is not a luxury, but a necessity. It is my great honor to present this proclamation and invite to the podium my friend, San Mateo County Poet Laureate Antonio Lopez, and to invite him to share a few of those powerful words with us this evening. Let's welcome him with a round of applause. I'm incredibly humbled. I was telling some of the staff, it's like a planetarium in here, isn't it? You just keep, I haven't looked up this much since Walmart had those Nintendo games that I wanted to play, and I had to be like this as a kid. Forgive me. Mayor Flores, members of the council, it is an enormous honor to be here. Mayor Flores spoke eloquently about the moment we're in, and as you all know, I've had a very unique journey, notwithstanding my parents' own migration. And it feels fitting to be reading a poem to a Latino mayor as a Latino poet laureate and here in a beautiful, multi-ethnic, multiracial city such as South San Francisco. I'm enormously honored. And people ask me, you know, why, why poetry now? And what I tell them is, why not poetry right now? You look at what's happening, which I don't have to tell you, the legislation, the federal administration, and now more than ever, we need language to unite us, language to bind us together, language to heal us. Every day is a headline that I'd rather not have, nor I'm sure your children. And what language can proffer us is the ability to understand how we as human beings are relating or not relating to each other. And at the end of the day, I think what people forget is that whatever language the poem is in, whatever experience it's trying to espouse, at the end of the day, it's about tapping into the universal humanity of the community you're talking about, of slowing down, of being able to appreciate what the images you're talking about. So anyways, enough of me lecturing. I'm just, I'm teaching nowadays, so it's in my mind all the time. I want to read to you a poem. Some folks may have already read it before, heard it before, but this is called "County Be My Name," and I hope that all of you take some time this evening to read poetry, to listen to poetry, because what it does is it creates empathy. It allows us to slow down in a world that is constantly demanding us to be busy. So thank you. "County Be My Name." Por la señal de las Santa Cruz Mountains lies a tomb with my own name. Antonio Lopez, actually, I'll just say quickly, I want to explain something briefly about this poem. It mentions my own name because my grandfather is buried at Skylon on the 92. My grandfather was a Mexican immigrant who had a green card, and I should add that my own aunt was not able to attend his funeral because the government rejected her humanitarian visa. And many communities in this country right now are hurting, and the best thing I can offer at this moment to you is my own experience going through that, and I hope that it gives you the inspiration and the ability to tap into your own family's histories, your own American story, because that is the beauty of this country, the opportunity and the dream that it gives each and every one of us to do better. So, sorry. Por la señal de las Santa Cruz Mountains lies a tomb with my own name. Antonio Lopez, February 5th, 1938. There is a happy ending to all this, else there is no point in being here. This here that hold your parents into a country of a county taken for gold and granite. Once lonely, Spanish, Mexican, American, no wonder your name bounces off the walls of every hyphen. The taste of blood and sea salt where surfers chase their death wish. The devil's trail, the deadly waves of zips. What man-made bluffs. The U.S. 101, this long stretch of wild, wild west side. Once whiskey gulch, the uphill battle of our kind and kin. All in, as in heels of palm shoveled the last mom and pops. Eighty-three in all. Ah, what a trip, for the passage of time to be branded the Four Seasons of Silicon Valley. Breathtaking, isn't it? And yet, here we is. I think about this a lot. What if I was born in Mex? If father never crossed? If a Republican president never signed the amnesty into law? I would have never learned to sing the Pledge of Allegiance at kindergarten, would have never had Slocum sign my birth certificate, would have never been a resident, a son of EPA. What a strange act, for papers to ask a newborn, "Do you wish to run?" As if there exists a divine right reason for the stroke of citizenship. As if once upon a bloodline, a ship wasn't granted safe passage. A guard didn't doze off. A policeman didn't rubber stamp the face of your face from Manila, or Michoacan, or Louisiana, or a little place called Samoa. We all from the shores of somewhere. We all come from a tradition where you learn to grow up fast giving speeches to the dead. And not a day goes by I don't see Mama Dee again. First United Methodist, her body as light as a proclamation. Look, truth is, no politician is born to do this. You learn to lead the ship amidst an ocean of Pacific islanders. Look, whatever side of the aisle you hail, Mary, we all just want a woman who looks like our mothers to whisper, "You're gonna be okay without me, mijo." To be loved enough that someone drove halfway around the edges of this earth for you, westbound, down 92, to attend a six-hour study session in the city of Half-Moon Bay, waved through the midnight of slides, Q&amp;A, and each speaker will have 60 seconds to convince me of their humanity. To convince three out of the five, yes on 555 Kelly, yes on 555 Kelly. Oh mercy, mercy, housing. May we live in a country where the people who pick our roof of food have a roof over their bullets. May they never have to wake Marciano Martinez again. May our children never walk through rows of ice. May our children never fear the color green, or red, or any of those that stalked the gangly fields of my eighth grade. May all living things in SMC have free enjoyment of their liberty and Wi-Fi. From the elfin butterfly of San Bruno, from the man who every dawn dresses as a crow to hawk Fiesta Auto Insurance down Middlefield Road. Hágase tu comercial así en la tierra como in North Fair Oaks. And give us this day our daily city, those foghorns in the distance, guiding these ships home, from the roar of plains in Nobre to the sea urchin of Moss Beach, from the weathered pews of courtroom 2A where I saw Fabian sentenced to life without the possibility of a poem. From superior courts where we stand the throw of a book or key away, from having to open your backpack before entering class. From abuelos and ninos who whispered north from these groaning bones of South San Francisco, old towns of factories, meatpacking plants, giant blocks of Lucerne cheese as a kid, the frozen cans of concentrate. From the check in Amma's hands as she marched up the WIC office, from Veterans Boulevard, the Redwood City branch of Kaiser Permanente. From these cold white tiles, she sang the national anthem of my ID card. From the quiet chorus of clerks through three-inch glass. Do you have a pen, ma'am? To the one I wield 'cause of her sleepless pats. In the name of the Father, of my Father, the Son, the One behind me as I speak, I, López Antonio de Jesús, do so accept this sacred and ancestral oath to be a poet laureate of San Mateo County. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, San Mateo County Poet Laureate Antonio López. Thank you once again. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item number two is a proclamation recognizing September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Mark Nicholas to lead us with this proclamation.
I don't know how I can follow that up with prostate cancer awareness month, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to our friend Antonio. Thank you for those lovely words. You know, I'm actually glad that the mayor asked me to present this proclamation, as I had a close mentor pass away because of prostate cancer. And so it was really important to me, and so my advice to you is get screened early. It's important for you and your family, so I'm, okay, focus, sorry. I'm not gonna get emotional here. So I'm proud to present this proclamation on behalf of the city of South San Francisco for it reads as we recognize September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. It is the second-leading cause of cancer death in American men, and is the most common non-skin cancer in America, with one in eight men diagnosed with prostate cancer sometime in their lifetime. And whereas the American Cancer Society estimates that over 313,000 new cases of prostate cancer in the United States in 2025, resulting in an estimate 36,000 deaths. Whereas a man is more likely to develop prostate cancer than he is to develop colon, kidney, melanoma, and stomach cancers combined. And whereas, the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, but drops to 30% when it spreads to other parts of the body. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with a healthcare provider and make informed decisions about whether to be tested for prostate cancer based on their personal values and preferences. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of South San Francisco joins communities across our nation, AHMCC and Medical Center, and other healthcare providers to increase awareness, but early detection and testing for prostate cancer, and designate September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. And this is signed by an entire city council, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Barry Chausser from Seton to come up and accept this proclamation. Again, for the men out there, please, please go out and get tested.
Let's welcome them with a round of applause, please.
Firstly, I'd like to just say what a pleasure it is to be in this beautiful building. It is really marvelous structure and so well utilized. I got here early and had time to walk through it, and gosh, it looked like half the community was here using it. It's really testimonial to, I think, the architecture and the thought that went into it. Secondly, just like to echo the thoughts that were just said about getting your prostate checked. Prostate cancer is lethal once it spreads. There's no cure for it once it's spread beyond the prostate. So the whole idea is to make sure that you find it when it's localized to the prostate before it's had a chance to cause any symptoms, as it can metastasize to bone or other organs. We recommend that you get a PSA. The guidelines now say between 45 and 50 as a baseline. And if you, in a high-risk group, for instance, if you are African-American, or you've had a first-degree relative who's had prostate cancer, you should be getting checked by age 40. So please bear that in mind, take that home to all your loved ones, and spread the word out, please. Thank you very much for taking the time to call attention to the problem of prostate cancer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chausser. Dr. Chausser. Next item, please.
Item number three is a proclamation recognizing September as National Preparedness Month.
Tonight, I'm also honored to present our city's Preparedness Month proclamation, a reminder that readiness is not just a plan, but it's a mindset. National Preparedness Month, observed every September, encourages individuals, families, and communities to take proactive steps to prepare for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. This year's theme, "Preparedness Starts at Home," reminds us that every household has a role to play, whether it's creating an emergency plan, building a kit, or checking in on your neighbors. Here in South San Francisco, we take that responsibility seriously. Our city responds to over 9,000 calls for service annually, completes more than 18,000 hours of training, and facilitates over 5,400 hours of CERT training. It is really a testament to our commitment to readiness, and that commitment is really made possible by the people behind it, and that's who I want to feature with this proclamation this evening. So if you are a member of our Community Emergency Response Team this evening, I don't just want you to stand up. I want you to come up and line up, because I believe that the community needs to hear and see you, so that you become familiar faces to them. So if you could come, please, up to the podium, share your name, and share how many years you've been with CERT, and we'll start with that, and then I will be providing the proclamation after that. So come on down, invite you to come to the podium, and we'll do that as, as a group, and then we'll also take a picture. I believe this is important, again, this is our, one of our, if not the, I like to say the, best Community Emergency Response Team here in San Mateo County in our region. So I'd like, if you could come up to the mic and say your name and how long you've been, and we'll quickly go through this.
My name is Sunny Koya. I have actually lost track of how many years I have been on CERT, but I do remember when Susan Kennedy offered the first set of classes, more than 30 years ago, I was in that class. The only identification card that I have that shows a date on it was about 30 years ago, which card was signed by our fire chief, Stock. And I enjoy being CERT. I have been active those many consecutive years, and I think I'm going to be a CERT member for many, many years to come.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We give Sunny a pass because he did the pledge, but not everyone has to speak up if you don't want to, so.
I'm Steve Furpo. I was in the freshman class with Susan Kennedy with Sunny as well, so I've been a member for a little under 30 years.
30 years. Look at that. Yeah, that's what I want the community to see. Thank you.
Hi, Scott Seiner. I'm a South City member. I've been a member since 2013.
Thank you for your service.
I'm John O'Connor. I've been a CERT member for a year and a half now.
Congratulations. Awesome.
I'm John Stone. I've been a CERT member for approximately 13 years.
Awesome.
I'm Judy Stone, and I've been a member for about 13 years.
Thank you.
Pauline Maloney, and I've been a member for 14 years.
I'm Gary Chancer. I'm a newbie, a little over a year, and obviously I didn't get the memo.
It's okay.
It's okay. You have a hat, so it's all good.
Hi, I'm Nar Nicholas. I've been in CERT for one and a half years.
Congratulations.
Don Wong, I think I've been in for about eight years.
Wow, that's great.
I'm Angie Rodriguez. I've been in for five months, but looking forward to many more years.
Oh, wow, that's excellent. Awesome.
Lydia Pomposo, five months. Thank you.
Do you know about eight years?
Great.
Tony Allen, and I also was trained first by Susan Kennedy.
Ramon Padilla, five months.
Five months, awesome.
I'm Mark Baratus.
Hilda Baratus.
We were trained by Phil White, I think it was like 15 or 20 years ago, something like that.
Thank you for your service.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Walsh, and I believe I've been in CERT since '09, so about 16 years.
Awesome, thank you.
My name is Lorna Venko. I've been a CERT member for about a year and a half.
Thank you.
I'm a newbie. My name is Glenn Ramos. I've been with CERT for a year and a half. We're just new, hoping to have funding for new CERT members, suit my city councils.
Good plug, good plug.
I'm Gail Yip. I've been a member for over probably 15 years, but a fun fact is I'm also a ham radio operator over 10 years because I had to renew my license, as many as of my fellow colleagues. So we're at the ready if all communications go out. We have, we're ham radio operators, so we're here to serve.
Awesome.
Hi, everybody. I'm Christina Hong. I'm part of the latest cohort that just got sworn in on July 17th. I'm really glad to be part of the South City CERT team as being of service to our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard Yi. I've been CERT member for 17 years, like the city council and the fire staff are supporting CERT for all this time.
Thank you, thank you. Let's give each and everyone a strong warm of applause. So everything from five months to about 30 years, so I'm going to ask our new interim finance director to do the math. I'm not, no, I'm joking. All right, so without further ado, I'm very honored and thank you again for each one for your service and being ready to step up when our community most needs you. In presenting this, I will present it to our chief, Matt Sampson, if you could come up to the podium. And I also want my entire council, I don't know how we're going to do this, but we're going to do this, I want a full picture with all our CERT team and the council as well. So I don't know if they come up to the front here, maybe up to the stage, but we're going to do this so we can remember it. Chief, please come up to the podium.
For the picture, I'll keep it short, but Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Adiego, and council members, Matt Sampson, your fire chief, and on behalf of our emergency services captain, Ken Anderson, and proudly standing before the men and women of our CERT team here, I want to say thank you very much for this proclamation. This month is one of two that's very important for the department to be able to message and engage the community, as preparedness really is a cornerstone to a community's ability to both respond to and then recover from a large-scale disaster. And as we learned day in and day out throughout the country, government alone cannot solve or meet all the community's needs in the first 24 to 72 hours of a disaster, but we can get pretty close with pretty powerful partnerships. And in this city, we're very, very fortunate to have a strong partnership with over the 100 member-strong men and women of our CERT team here that are literally giving thousands of hours of volunteer time every year to make sure that we're as prepared and we can respond as well. And not just for disasters, but they give to the community. We see them at all of our events. They're very engaged, they want to help, they are members of the community that we're very proud to have on our team. But the second partnership that we continue to try to foster is that with the community itself. You mentioned that preparedness starts at home, and we take that to heart, and we really ask all community members to make sure that they do everything they can to be as self-sufficient as possible for the first 24 to 72 hours of disaster, and that allows us to help quite a bit with that. And we also encourage the community to engage in all of our public messaging. We always are saying it, but it's incredibly important to sign up for SMC alerts, follow the city on our social media platforms, and then learn about the county's evacuation software that we use to help inform evacuations. And for more information on all that stuff, we have information on the fire department's website. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, chief, once again. So if we could all do a quick picture together, and council join me, please. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate that. Thank you for indulging me. We'll definitely keep that picture around for a long time. Next item, please.
Item number four is a proclamation recognizing September 17th to 23rd, 2025 as Constitution Week.
Thank you, and I've asked my colleague, Councilmember James Coleman, to take over this proclamation, and if I could ask our former city-elected city clerk, Sylvia Payne, if you could also join us here at the podium. Councilmember Coleman.
Thank you. This week, we recognize and we honor the Constitution of the United States, our founding document, the bedrock of our democracy and the guiding framework for our freedoms. For nearly 250 years, the Constitution has served as both a promise and a safeguard, ensuring that power remains accountable and that the rights of our people are protected. But today, as we proclaim National Constitution Week, we must also acknowledge the threats that it faces today. The current administration has taken actions that irresponsibly and directly undermined our constitution. The most recent Supreme Court ruling, which legalizes racial profiling by ICE, runs counter to the very principles of equal protection under the law. It violates the Fourth Amendment of unreasonable search and seizures. Imagine being stopped by law enforcement simply for the way that you look or the language that you speak that is now legalized by the most recent Supreme Court. The administration's attempts to strip funding from states and agencies despite the Constitution's clear grant of power of the purse to Congress, these are blatant violations of separation of powers. This includes the withholding of billions of dollars in school funding, healthcare funding, and more. And of course, earlier this year, attempts to overturn birthright citizenship. We have witnessed the decades of hard-fought rights being rolled back, the right to reproductive healthcare, LGBTQ+ rights, and other liberties once upheld as settled law. These reversals do not strengthen our democracy, they weaken it. They weaken it by eroding public trust and stripping away protections that generations of Americans have relied on. So this year, National Constitution Week is not only a celebration of the founding of our country, it is also a call to action. It reminds us that the Constitution is only as strong as our collective commitment to defend it. The Constitution can in many ways feel very abstract, but it exists to safeguard our rights, and it has real-life impacts on all of our lives. So in this moment, we must stand together to safeguard the principles of liberty, equality, and justice for all. And with that said, it is my honor to present this proclamation to Sylvia Payne, who was once a city clerk for our great city of South San Francisco. Thank you.
Let's welcome her with a warm hand of applause.
Thank you, council, Mayor Eddy, and former colleagues of mine that I knew back in 2007, Mark Adiego. Nice to see you, Flor. Mark Nicholas. I have to do my elevator pitch about the DAR.
Yes.
We are a nonprofit, nonpolitical service organization, volunteers, and we're dedicated to historic preservation, patriotism, and education. And our commonality with over 200,000 members currently, we are descendants of patriots, supporters, fighters of the American Revolution, and we are very proud of our heritage. I'd like to just let you know that the exhibit will be upstairs in the library section, and the exhibit will be available as long as, you know, the building is open because it's in the hallway. So I invite you to stop by and take a look at it. We're giving away the Constitution booklets that I prepared, gave to the clerk to give to you tonight, and there'll be flags, we'll be handing out American flags. So I also like to thank Valerie Summer for allowing us to do this again, a second year in a row, that we're taking the week to have this exhibit. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Again, appreciate it very much.
Good to see you.
Likewise, thank you again.
Thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move along to council comments and requests.
Who would like to kick us off this evening? Councilwoman?
Okay, I'll do it. You know that the Filipinos have been known to celebrate the longest Christmas in the whole world? And in the Philippines, we start singing Christmas carols and putting up Christmas decorations when the bear month comes in. So many were excited to see the pine hill tree lighted up, and some credited to me and Mark Nicholas. But I had to explain more than once that it was because of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and it's not because returning to be Filipinos. It was a beautiful tree lighting ceremony led by Mayor Flores last August 28th with Juliana Penas' family and community members of the LPR. And then also this weekend, my husband and I spent the weekend at Delano to commemorate the 60th anniversary of the Delano grape strike that led to the establishment of the United Farm Workers Union and the improvement of our farm workers' working conditions. Although despite for the migrant workers' rights is still ongoing, I feel proud to stand with my fellow Filipino-Americans for the role they played in the struggle. This week, my heart was broken into many pieces due to the passing of two beautiful individuals who were full of life and light just the week before. I requested our meeting be adjourned in memory of the following. Nani Wilson. Nani had been the annual emcee of our sister-to-sister leadership conference for the last three consecutive years. She was the project supervisor of San Mateo Youth at the Asian American Recovery Services. She has been teaching culturally-specific parenting classes and facilitating community safe spaces to share awareness and dialogue on topics around mental health, and she had always been a positive force caring for our youth. She died in her sleep two days ago. Second is Father Eric Belandria, a Jesuit priest who was assigned in Rome. He came to deliver Pope Leo's proclamation and greetings to Saint Augustine two weeks ago. He participated in all the festivities and serenaded many during the Karaoke Night with his beautiful baritone. Two days after returning in Rome, he suffered a fatal heart attack. He touched many people with his kindness and warmth in our South City community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Coleman?
Sure. I was out of town for most of the last two weeks, but I did come back in time for an OCA banquet. OCA stands for the Organization of Chinese-Americans in San Mateo. They always host their banquet at Grand Palace in South San Francisco, so I'm glad they keep coming back. And OCA this year, so every time they have their annual banquet, they honor a couple community members. Last year, they honored Carol Matsumoto, who used to be on our council. And this year, they honored Dr. Randall Yip, one of our very own in South San Francisco. And if that name doesn't sound familiar, well, the whole family is very involved in South San Francisco. So Randall's wife is on the CERT team, and his son, Daryl Yip, is on our B-PAC, and they are proud constituents of District 2, Mark Nicholas' district. And Randall's very active, yes, Randall is very active in Alzheimer's community as well, in spreading awareness. And he was honored by OCA for his work in the AAPI community, the Asian-American Pacific Island community, for his work, including writing for Ask AM News and reporting on the AAPI community. And so I'd like to extend a big congratulations to Dr. Randall Yip, and look forward to his many contributions in the future to our community. Next, I do want to issue a statement. Today was not an easy day in our country. I was horrified to hear of not one, but actually two, school shootings that happened today. The 46th and the 47th school shootings of this year, including the assassination of a high-profile conservative commentator. In the past few years, we have seen an alarming increase in political violence. Plots to kidnap Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer, members of Congress, including Nancy Pelosi, the assassinations earlier this year of Minnesota House Speaker Melissa Hortman and her husband, and a shooting of Minnesota State Senator John Hoffman, and now the assassination of Charlie Kirk. It makes me worry for the future of this country because political violence is spreading. And violence can be contagious, but only if we allow it to. Violence is not confined to one side of our belief system, and it should scare us all. The foundation of a free society is the ability to participate in it without fear of violence. That is the First Amendment. And political violence against one of us is an attack against us all. Because I can tell you, moving forward, there will be people who are more scared to speak out. And the only way to meet controversial ideas is by presenting your own ideas and debating it with all of our freedoms of free speech. This tragic event only extends the line of political division and puts others at risk. And I hope everyone who has suffered from today's events can get the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Nicholas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Coleman. I wholeheartedly agree with you that political violence should never be accepted, regardless where you are in the political aisle. It should never be accepted, and I was heartbroken to see what happened in Colorado and what happened in Utah. So I appreciate you bringing it up, Councilmember Coleman. So I wanted just kind of a couple items that I did. I was able to go to a couple back-to-school night events. It was really great to see all the parents out there and were really involved, and were really excited about joining the PTA. And also the conversations about the speed limit being reduced down to 15 miles per hour, kind of seeing all those signs all over the different campuses. The parents are definitely talking about that, and I really appreciate, again, Public Works putting it out there. And then, as Councilmember Nicholas mentioned, we attended the tree lighting for Juliana Penas, and I think the mayor summed it up well, where, you know, hopefully one day we're not celebrating it anymore because we find a cure. You know, and until then, we'll keep lighting that tree up in memory of Juliana and all those we lost. So hopefully, we will find a cure soon. And then lastly, you know, yesterday, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution approving a project- a resolution approving a project labor agreement between the county and the San Mateo County Building Trades for public work projects for the next five years. I know we've been talking about looking at prequalification languages. And, you know, I would like us to potentially explore what appeal LA would look like here in South San Francisco. There's language already being drafted by the county. It's been approved. Let's take a look at it and see what that would look like, and if we can move on that, I would really, really appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report tonight, but Councilman Coleman's words got me thinking. And we have had some dark times in the past, and I was really struck. Many years ago, I was at, I think at the time it was Assemblyman Mullen's office, and he has a photo on the wall that was taken along the El Camino Real here in South San Francisco about the time that Robert F. Kennedy was in California to campaign in a big reception here at this intersection, 1968. And I think it was two days later, he was assassinated in Los Angeles. And there were two other people in the cars. They motored up to San Francisco, and they were Leo Ryan and George Moscone. So within that 10-year timeframe, all three of those leaders, those exceptional people, would be assassinated. So it's not the first time. It needs to be the last time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate those remarks. I also want to take a moment to recognize the passing of a dedicated public servant, former Cupertino Mayor and Councilmember Hung Way, who recently served as Treasurer and Secretary of the League of California Cities Peninsula Division up until last year, January 2024, when Councilmember Nagales served as Division President until she stepped down from her reelection campaign due to a battle of stage IV cancer, lung cancer. Former Mayor Hung was more than a public servant. She was a radiant force of compassion. If you got to see her, she also served many terms as a Board Trustee in the school district there in Cupertino. She shared her wisdom and unwavering dedication to our community, and she was also a member of the Cupertino Rotary Club. Her leadership was marked by grace and integrity, and her presence really brought warmth and unity to every room she entered. And she promoted dialogue, which speaks to an alliance with what we are speaking here. Whether she championed education or civic engagement or the arts, Hung led with a spirit that inspired all of us, the privilege, who had the privilege to work alongside her. So may her memory be a blessing. Also want to adjourn in the memory of the father-in-law of our city clerk, Rosego de Acosta, Jose Acosta Alumada, her father-in-law, who passed away recently in Mexico this past week. Wonderful man, loved by all the Acosta family who knew him, and he absolutely will be dearly missed. I also thank you, Councilmember Nagales. I join in strong support for your request to move forward in consideration of language of a project labor agreement. If we could look at what that looks like in terms of the language that the county has now approved, which I also saw that it was unanimously approved. Project labor agreements also, you know, bring about safety. It's about wages. It's about scheduling. It's about providing support for dispute resolutions for workers. It prevents costly delays with no strikes, no lockout provisions, and ensures that projects stay on time and on budget. And here in South San Francisco, we have so many budgets coming, I mean, projects coming up that we want to make sure that those get reviewed. So I'd support that, and if we could look into that, Madam City Manager, on that note too. And lastly, I want to be emphatically clear to all those watching, in particular, our young folks, if anyone is watching, that as it has been said from this dais to night, political violence is inexcusable. It's immoral and beneath our nation, our city, our region, our state. We on this council condemn the act against Mr. Charlie Kirk that happened today in every way possible. No matter what side of the debate you are on, we must reject the idea that someone's opponents are your enemies, and instead, commit to seeing one another as neighbors, as citizens, as human beings. And I continuously say that from this dais. Let's engage in dialogue. Let's engage in productive discussions with solutions that move us forward and find common ground, not separated ground that alienates us. And with that in mind, we are respectful of all groups. Thank you all. All right. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Move along to public comments.
Good evening. During the last four council meetings, I raised questions on the process and data related to the Movement of the Year event. At the June 25th meeting, I brought a double-sided board with data and questions to the podium with another meeting attendee helping me hold it up, so both the council and the audience could see the slides, or actually the data that I was referring to during my comments. However, when I read the approved minutes for the meeting, it shows the following individuals address the city council. Annie. At the July 9th meeting, prior to presenting my comments, I handed six pages of document to Assistant City Clerk Miranda and asked her to include that as a part of the records for that meeting, and another set of same six pages to Mr. Flores. The approved minutes of that meeting that documented my comments, the following individuals address the city council. Annie. At the August 13 meeting, I did not have any board or any documents to be presented, and my comments were recorded as the following individuals address the city council. Annie. I looked at the council minutes from years ago, well, just five years ago on August 26 of 2020, and found that public comments were better documented during that time. For example, Ellie expressed concern with expansion of Kyle Train project and funding. So I submitted public records to the city clerk and asked why was there a change to the minutes? And Mr. Acosta actually responded, "In 2016, the city council established that action minutes would be used to record proceedings of the legislative body, and in 2021, the city council handbook reaffirmed that process." So I asked Mr. Acosta, "Can you explain what is action minutes?" So while I'm still waiting for her to respond, I actually looked up, you know, a few books here, and from The Art of Taking Minutes by Dolores Dotterma. Minutes are the official record of a meeting. It can be brief or lengthy, depending on the length of the meeting's agenda, subjects, and the desires of the meeting body. Action minutes are a temporary record until the minutes of the full proceedings are distributed in final form. No loss, nonprofit meetings and minutes. At the minimum, your minutes should provide a record of the actions taken by your board. In addition, minutes should include evidence that the board had reasonably looked at everything, such as having a presentation or report before acting on an important issue. And your minutes should also be sufficiently detailed and cleared, so they are useful for any reader, not just those present at the meeting.
Thank you.
So I just want to ask the council to please look at that.
Next item, or next person, please.
Good evening. In 1978, the voters passed Measure P to purchase the former Value Giant as a community center. The taxpayers were charged a property tax of $0.05 per $100 of assessed property value for 20 years to pay for the MSB. In a 2016 video, Mike Frutell states, "It was just an old department store." Yet, it was completely and thoroughly remodeled as a community facility with special requirements for the police and fire departments formulated into the construction. It cost us, the taxpayers, an additional $228,905 for the architect and an additional $3,026,000 for the police and fire services requirements, a senior citizens' center, and other facilities housed at the MSB. The MSB cost $1,390,000 in 1978 for the building, and the property taxpayers paid to purchase the Value Giant property as a multi-use center, specifically showing in the blueprints and in newspaper articles, it had a dedicated senior citizens' center. We estimated the city collected over $30 million during that 20-year period. It's a rough estimate, but where's the rest of the money? The MSB was illegally taken from us, the 30,000 senior residents, when the city adopted the out-of-date 2010 general plan in 2017, not doing their lawful duty mitigating that there was a dedicated senior citizens' center in the MSB, but adopted the out-of-date 2010 SEQA without following the fundamental due process laws violating the citizen-state and federal rights, and swapped the MSB for the Civic Center campus. Submitting for the record, Resolution 5479, along with the clerk's minutes, Article 15, outlining the costs referenced with a specific language remodeling of Value Giant for Police Department, Communications, Fire Administration, Parks and Recreation Department, and Senior Citizens Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Flores, member of South San Francisco City Council and fellow citizens, my name is Sam Ketkuti. Is South San Francisco looking to put itself in the Guinness Book of World Records? I recently saw on Junipisera from across the exit on Arroyo, things being ready for a stoplight there. I lived in country club estates from 1968 to 1998. There was never a stoplight at that intersection. There has not been one since 1998, and I'll bet that there never was one. I realize that Junipisera is partly run by the County of San Mateo, but also by the city of South San Francisco. Recently, I got off the 280 at the Avalon off-ramp. From Avalon to Hickey is a two-mile drive. Okay. There was a stoplight at Avalon. From Avalon to Westboro is a half-mile. There's another stoplight. From Westboro to Arroyo is only 2/10 of a mile. Another stoplight. From Arroyo to King, where there is another stoplight, is another half-mile stretch. There's a proposition, I understand, to put stoplights at Clay and knock down the overpass. Okay. That's only 6/10 of a mile. We finally get to Hickey Boulevard, which is, again, is only 2/10 of a mile away. Grand total for six traffic lights is a whopping two miles, roughly averaging traffic light every .333 miles. Will these traffic lights be synchronized, or will the closeness of the lights have drivers pulling their hair out? If the traffic lights at Westboro across El Camino for cars going eastbound to Clay at Antoinette have not been synchronized in years and cause a traffic mess each and every day, I am willing to bet that synchronization is out of the question. Is the city and county looking to infuriate drivers in South San Francisco, or for once, will you have some sort of solution? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Corey David.
I thought I'd offer a regress report rather than a progress report this evening. If we are to believe the staff report on the status of the MSB, we still don't know what party or parties are responsible for letting it fall into tens of millions of dollars in disrepair. We think we know why Kaiser Permanente's inquiry into using the MSB as a flu clinic was abandoned, but we do not know who offered a seismic report to discourage them. The city lost a source of revenue due to this outcome. It appears that at least two developers will be granted 10-year extensions to start their projects, guaranteeing parts of our city will fall into suburban blight for years to come. Another example of this blight can be observed across the street as our city officials put any plans to determine the future of the MSB off for years. The building will likely fall into further disrepair, but it will fit right in it, as Burri Burri Shopping Center looks disgusting. To add insult to injury, now the shopping center is being used as a staging area for a paving company, as our iconic Gunter's tries to serve its loyal customers amidst the chaos. Clearly, the city doesn't care what happens to Burri Burri Shopping Center unless it involves a socialist-communist housing experiment. We've been investigating city use of taxpayer revenues, and as credit card records trickle in, it has become obvious that the monies have been frivolously used: travel expenses, fine accommodations and dining, food and snacks, coffee breaks, and even a bottle of bourbon, all at taxpayer expense. In a city with a healthy budget, maybe these perks are of no concern. But as has been stated, the current budget deficit is quote-unquote unsustainable. Bottom line, after years of fiscal irresponsibility, the city wants the same residents they ignore and disrespect to bail them out with new revenues. With every new expense revelation, many residents are not inclined to reward your actions, but are inclined to starve the beast, best not to count on any new revenue. I find it ironic that even with an excellent fire department on call, even they can't save our city when our city officials metaphorically burn it down. Should you choose to move on to bigger and better things and abandon our sinking landlocked Titanic, know that your record will follow you.
Next speaker is Tom Carney, who's looking to speak to public comments and an agenda
Good evening, Council. I passed on a packet to you with some pictures of our downtown District 5. I'm a long-term resident of District 5 over 30 years. The first picture, number one, shows a city lot, 200 block for the audience. Weeds, turn the page over. Weeds, six, seven, eight feet tall, all dry brush debris, next to businesses, a fire hazard. Been there for at least 10 years, city owners, the property owners. Picture number three, garbage cans on the 300 block of Grand Avenue, a disaster. Look at the grease, the grime. No wonder every second door is closed on Grand Avenue. Here we across from Gin Manifeek. This is just across from City Hall. Bin's overflowing. City can't empty them, never has. I've been coming front of you for 10 years. Airport Boulevard, Gateway to our city. This is ongoing problem, trash, blight, all over Grand Avenue on Airport Boulevard. Here, within half a block of the new building, the Ford site, some of you may be familiar with that location. Look at the weeds and the blight, open holes, tree wells, been left abandoned for years. What are we doing? Drinking fountain, barf. Been there for months. Nobody takes care of it. That's out of the trail. Trail's a disaster. Here's at the trail, garbage, paint, tires, gasoline, going into the bay. Save the bay, God help us. Here's the trail again. I talked about the e-bikes. Kids are going to get ran over. You gotta cut your weeds. This is in your property line. This is your responsibility as a city. If the property owner's responsible, don't we have an arm to enforce that? Don't we have a great mechanism? But that means supervisors have to do their job. They gotta put boots in the ground, look around, see what's going on. This is our city. Constitution Week, James, you took that away from residents' free speech. And again, I'm going to say the same thing. Wrap yourself in the flag tonight. You really, you don't care, James. You know that. Safeway site. We've been promised for over 13 years a safeway. If we get a safeway and you leave the blight and debris and the city out there putting up the fence in wintertime and weeds, it's a disaster. It will equalize Grand Avenue in the lower downtown. It will equalize Grand Avenue in the lower downtown. It'll all look the same. If you want to bring in new businesses, like Grand Avenue, every second door is empty, you have to make it the way. Now, some people think that the city is running down the downtown because you're the big buyers now in town with taxpayers' money. So are you running down Grand Avenue that much that you can acquire the property at less value and then donate it back to developers to make a profit? Only asking questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, can you remind us about who is in charge? In fact, I would like to request that we have maybe Code Enforcement come and provide an update presentation in the future so that the community understands that it's the property owner that takes care. Can you remind us that? And also about the trashcans that belong to Sam Trans, please, or the garbage cans?
Right. Well, each property owner is responsible for the sidewalk and for the frontage to the curb, for maintenance of that area. The city does do courtesy cleanups. I'm thinking of a resident who referred one recently, and we do it as a courtesy, but it is their responsibility. We can ask Code Enforcement to enforce, and they do enforce. And they start with a courtesy notice and work their way up to a citation. The second part of your question is...
The trashcan, Sam Trans?
Yes. Well, Sam Trans, the same thing. They have a regular pickup schedule, but they only pick up once a week. And so the city, if they're overflowing, we do our best to pick them up in the interim, but it is the responsibility of Sam Trans.
Those aren't city trashcans?
Not the slatted cans with the curved tops. Those are Sam cans, Sam Trans cans.
Okay. So if we could in the future just have an update, maybe if enforcement could come in, and so the community knows what the city does and what the community members and residents can also support and help on.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something that speaks to Mr. Carney's concerns? Because he was heard and had a conversation recently with the Assistant City Manager, who has reached out to the staff at BCDC because they have some ability to enforce also. Do you have any update for us, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adiego. Yes, we met with BCDC staff. It was Director Mediani, the City Manager, and I. And we clarified what authority BCDC has specifically along the Bay Trail. And one thing that we can do as a city is to update BCDC on who are the adjacent property owners, and that way BCDC can do its job, which is enforce when property owners aren't doing theirs.
So I know it's too slow, but there is a mechanism to bring in a strong partner to help alleviate some of the neglect that is out there by many property owners.
And to be able to monitor constantly. Thank you.
Next speaker is Fianola.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman and Mr. Flores, for raising Mr. Charlie Kirk's name here this I would like to believe that you are sincere in your words. May adjournment also recognize today the political assassination of exceptional young leader, 31-year-old Charlie Kirk, who has left behind two young children and a wife because of the political violence that has been incited purposely. I would like an investigation into the pharmaceutical drugs that are the cause of many of these episodes also mentioned tonight with respect to the school shootings. I would also like an investigation into why we are not documenting public records accurately to reflect the public concerns, to reflect with accuracy what has happened in this city because upon close scrutiny of those documents. Let me put it like this. You claim to care about the Constitution. We know that you do not, because if you did, you would follow it. But the Constitution will save the citizens of this city. And each of you will be held personally liable for what you have done to the people of this city, what you have stolen, and how you have deceived the people in this city. Each of you will be held personally liable. The Constitution is there to protect the people against tyrannical government. The real disaster around here is each one of you, elected and unelected bureaucrats. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, is that it?
That concludes our speakers, Mayor.
Great. Let's move on to the next item, please.
We'll move along to our consent calendar. Item number five is a motion to approve the minutes from the meetings of August 27, 2025, and September 5, 2025. Item number six is a motion to cancel the regular city council meeting of October 8, 2025. Item number seven is a motion to approve the reappointment of one member to the Housing Authority Tenant Commission and three members to the Youth Commission. Item number eight is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year professional services agreement with Intermedia.net Inc. for upgrading the city phone system to a unified communication hosted platform in the amount not to exceed Item number eight A is the resolution. Item number nine is a report regarding a resolution approving a purchase and sale agreement and accepting a quitclaim deed for a portion of Old Mission Road and authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and certificate of acceptance. Item number nine A is the resolution. Item number 10 is a report regarding a resolution accepting $100,000 from the State of California Office of Traffic Safety for the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program to be used for personnel overtime, equipment, and training expenses, and amend the police department's operating budget for fiscal year 2025 to '26 by approving Budget Amendment Number 26.016. Item number 10 A is the resolution. Item number 11 is a report regarding a resolution approving Budget Amendment Number 26.019 and authorizing the city's acquisition of a below-market rate unit at 2230 Geller Boulevard, Unit 3303. Item number 11 A is the resolution. Item number 12 is a report regarding a second reading and adoption of an ordinance adopting a development agreement to extend improved entitlements to construct a new office, RND campus, and multifamily residential building at 180 El Camino Real in the planned development zoning district for a period of 10 years in exchange for payment of community benefits, monetary contribution obligations in accordance with Title 19 and 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code. Item number 12 A is the ordinance. Item number 13 is a report regarding a proposed development agreement to extend improved entitlements to construct a new office, RND campus, at 800 Dubuque Avenue in the east of 101 Transit Core Zoning District for a period of 10 years in exchange for prepayment of community benefit program fee obligations in accordance with Title 19 and 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code, and a recommendation determining consistency of the proposed action with the adopted initial study mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Item number 13 A is the ordinance. Item number 14 is a report regarding a second reading and adoption of an ordinance adopting amendments to Title 20 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code regarding provisions regulating tobacco use to make minor revisions, corrections, and clarifications to ensure consistency throughout the municipal code, and to remove hookah bar smoking lounge from the commercial use classifications under Sections 20.620.040. Item number 14 A is the ordinance.
Thank you, Jasmine. Are there any items any member would like to pull from consent agenda?
Number 11, Mr. Mayor.
Number 11. I will also pull number 14. Anyone else? All right. Let's start with number 11, please.
And so this unit that concerns, this item that concerns a BMR unit up in City Lights, I don't know if that's still the name, but that's how I know it, City Lights. It reminds me of something that occurred two or three years ago, something similar, where the individual could not market it as a BMR unit. And so unless we acted, they could at some point sell it at market rate, and then we lose a below-market rate. So we are interested in saving it, but this appears to be a little bit different this time. Can you give me a little background? I don't know, I know there's probably some parts you can't tell me, but somebody who has had a great deal of difficulty and has been challenged financially a couple of times.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Aliyah Moreno, Housing Management Analyst. Yeah, so a little bit of background. The city did receive a notice of default for the property owner. He unfortunately has not been paying the HOA fees. And within the notice of default, we were informed that he had 90 days to take action and to cure his default. If he didn't cure his default, then the property will be foreclosed. And that's where we come in, and we want to intervene and prevent the foreclosure so we won't lose a unit to regular market. This isn't the first instance that he's fallen behind. This is his third, but it's his third notice of default. It's mostly been on the HOA fees where he's been...
Yeah, that's remarkable and unfortunate that the HOA is tripping him up that much. They can be expensive. But at the same time, there was some mention of a lien being placed against the property by someone else?
Yeah, so he does have, he does have a state tax lien, but it was unfortunately from his business that he didn't pay taxes, and they went after his property.
Okay. So I understand at some point, if we step in and pay, we have to pay a certain amount based on what he should be able to get for the unit?
So we do have a few options. So the report that I presented to you all this evening pretty much is us intervening and purchasing the unit. Of course, this would mean that the resident or the owner would have to be removed from the unit. We do have the other option of just curing the default for him. So he owes about $52,000 in HOA fees. We could cure the default and just put in a lien on the property and regain the money that we invest at the time of resale.
So if we don't, if we don't cure the default for him to keep him there, we are basically satisfying the bank that's involved and whatever agency placed a lien? Are we responsible for both when we take control?
Yeah, so when we take, when we would take control, we would pretty much be taking over all of the responsibilities.
Including the HOA to the association?
Yes.
Really? Okay. The only other question I had, you know, it's kind of a unique time because we think that housing financing is going to be more affordable shortly, potentially. But until that happens, is there an opportunity to time this correctly, or maybe have it be a rental unit for a period of time?
So that is something that we could take into consideration. Of course, this is all in discretion of, with your approval. This is something that we would need to mention to the HOA to see if they allow for a rental in the South City Lights community. But it is a potential option that we could discuss with them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. And next item I'd like to pull, just have a second roll call, is item number 14. For reasons previously stated in the previous meeting, I will be abstaining in that item. So if I could have a motion to approve that consent agenda minus item 14, so move for consent and calendar items five through 13.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Great. I have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion for item number 14?
I would second.
Okay. I have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Mayor Flores?
Abstain.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. We are not doing administrative business this evening. Next item, please.
We'll move along to items from council, committee reports, and announcements.
Anyone have any committee reports or announcements to make? Good of the order.
I do have...
Yes, please.
...a brief announcement and maybe a quick ask of our city council. I know it's a little last minute, but we've done it in the past. So basically, I'm sure we've, many of us may have been following SB 63, which is enabling legislation that allows us to enter into a regional transit measure to fund transit and save BART, Caltrade, MUDI agencies from a fiscal cliff, but also make sure that we have a lot more money flowing through to Sam Trans. And there's been, you know, the bill language that we have today is much different from what we had a couple months ago. There's been a lot of accountability provisions included, thanks to the work of our local legislators, of our transit agency staff and leaders. And so SB 63 will be, will be going to a floor vote in assembly on Thursday evening, that's tomorrow, and then I believe another vote in the Senate for concurrence. And so my ask to the city council is if we could send a letter to our local delegation reiterating our support for SB 63 and our inclusion, the inclusion of San Mateo County in that measure.
Mr. Mayor, if my council moves forward, then I would have to recuse myself as my employer is BART and is affected by SB 63.
Understood. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Did you have any say? Else? Yeah. That's, we do yes. Unless, anyone else? Okay.
Does it have to be agendaed?
Do you have to agenda it, or?
We have in the past allowed last-minute items to be brought up during items from council for these letters of support. But if council is not inclined to consider it this evening and have it agendaed, obviously it would be after the vote, but it is something that has been handled in the past under the council policy and the handbook.
Well, I certainly understand the time constraint, but I am inclined to agree, but I'm not 100% there, so I would vote no if we're voting tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman Nicholas? I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are you, so since this is an item that Councilmember Coleman has asked to be added, if you're going to entertain discussion, can you just clarify that so that Councilmember Nicholas can recuse himself?
Sure. Yes, I'd like to see where Councilwoman Nicholas stands, so I would request that you recuse yourself then. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adiego said that he is not ready to move forward on that, so just wanted to clarify where you stand, Councilwoman Nicholas?
Yeah, I'm not ready to do that, too, so...
Okay. So it is a draw here. 2-2. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is closed session. Item number 16, closed session, public employment, title, city manager.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. We are adjourned to closed session.